Hi, welcome to reclaiming my mind. I am your host Jessica Vaughn. And today we have again joining us our co-host Ken Cook. Thanks for joining in with us, Ken.
Oh, thank you for having me, Jessica.
And today we have our special guest Lynn Gray, who is currently on our Board of Education on the school board and is running for reelection. So, thank you so much for joining us Lynn.
Oh, you're so welcome. Thank you for the opportunity.
Do you prefer for me to call you Lynn or Ken is always very formal and will call you Ms. Ms. Gray? Do you have a preference?
I either way, whatever you feel most comfortable.
Okay, so tell me please a little bit right now about yourself, your background, what you like? And then we'll get into your district and the school board. So tell me a little bit about Lynn Gray.
Okay, well, um, so currently I'm on the school board district wide and behind the scenes, I am an athlete, a runner for perhaps forty something years and a coach and business owner, had a quarter million dollar training center and obviously a teacher for well about thirty years. And the span goes from nineteen seventy-six in Pasco to, well, let's see, last year I taught a little bit at Sulfur Springs. I was subbing, subbing. So that's a little bit different. But I have taught fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, twelfth in college and, and you know, public schools, private at Jesuit. So my teaching experience ranges from every part of the county at Latto, East Bay, Claywell, you know, middle school, which is, well, anyway, I'll get to the middle school. Trying to remember all the schools I taught at, but I taught a variety of ages and a variety of courses, largely AP honors and you know, I'm very much of a political science buff. I so much enjoy politics, doc.
Wow.
And yeah, so I especially like the, that part of, of teaching. I am an addictive teacher. I love my, I love my profession and, and run with my teachers and principals friends. And I am a very avid gardener. So I have a beautiful backyard garden, which takes me, takes me away from any stress, which is always good. So I have a son, Thomas Gray, two granddaughters, a husband of, I think we're going on about thirty, thirty-five, thirty-six years of marriage and, and lived in Tampa for over fifty, fifty-seven years. And originally from New York, Freeport, Long Island. I have two brothers and two other sisters. So yeah, that's, that's a lot right there.
That is, I would like to congratulate you. That is the most information anyone has shared on the podcast when I've asked them about themselves and I enjoy it. I feel like I got a, a little get to know you session right there. So I appreciate it. So that tells us a little bit about you. Tell me now again about your district. You mentioned it's countywide. What district number is it? And tell me, sorry, go ahead.
No, finish up Jessica. The district number seven. Go ahead, go ahead.
And tell me about some of the diversity in the district. I mean Hillsborough County is the eighth largest county in the country. So it's huge. It's bigger than some states. And I'd imagine, you know, being countywide and having to represent such a large district, it's, it's gotta be a challenge. So tell me a little bit about, you know, Hillsborough County as an entire district.
Well, and that's such a, that's such a great question. And this will be a pretty large answer to match the large district. I have, I have lived in different parts of our county, you know, in Riverview, South Tampa, Northwest Tampa. Not that we moved a lot, but I guess in retrospect, all those years I've lived countywide in many, at least in my, my own point of view. And then of course I taught countywide. Now, being a school board countywide, it's so different. It really is. It's every, and you know, every school is different. That, that you know, but every part of the county, for example Hispanics, you know, there's not just one Hispanic population. And you have your migrants, you have your town and country, you have your Dover population, just a tremendous difference in, in the outreach. But I look at every part of Tampa and I look for the folks that are needing the most resources and avenues for learning. And I, I get out there and I, I pretty much try to help them connect with the best educational practices, given now we have a new superintendent. I'm looking forward to sharing the area of, for example, Waianae and Ruskin. I have a huge Hispanic forum that I meet. And then I have also, when we talk about the urban core, you know, I'm again, this, this comes from our educational background, Jessica. I love curriculums and I taught so many different subjects. So the African-American, I'm destined and determined to sophisticated and have some AP or at least pre-AP black studies because our black studies are very, very weak. And the continuum from elementary to high school is like, it's just very spotty. So I have maybe about forty African-American leaders that were working on the sophistication and a huge brain bowl. That's Fred Hearns. I don't know if you've heard of him or not, but he's a great historian. So I mean, that brings out my history love as well. Then you have the, the top notch students. As Jesuit, I had, you know, the perfect SAT scores and all that. So I'm, I'm very much involved in making sure that curriculum matches the needs of the students and not to dumb them down. I've seen that happen at Claywell. We, we did the scores down for honors, I mean gifted. And it was, I thought it was the biggest travesty I've ever experienced. So I don't, I never liked that practice. And I look at every population in this county and it has different needs and it's so interesting. The only part that gets you going is it's so comprehensive. I mean, my meetings, the Hillsborough Healthy Schools, you know, you know about the social, physical, mental outreach for each school to receive a good housekeeping seal of approval, what we call at Hillsborough Healthy Schools. Every school measures their, their needs on a checklist and that's a big survey, but it just shows you the distinct differences of the needs of each school. And of course, the community reflects the needs. So you know, countywide person needs to really be familiar with the county. There's no question. And you don't ever stop driving. I mean, my car is like a living room. So you know, I, I, I do a lot with the correspondence, but like, let's see, what's happening this week? So this week, oh, Mayor Lot. He's such a wonderful man, but he's a visionary. Now, I shouldn't say but, he is a visionary. And he is just inclined to want to pursue the vocational tech school. He wants this, he's got a piece of land.
Is Mayor Lot, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Is that, is that Plant City or is that Temple Terrace?
Now Mayor Lot's from Plant City. So now we're working on a vocational tech visionary plan, Superintendent Davis and myself. So I really work on land use too, because the future of our district depends on us getting more schools. So you know, there again, I have one in South Tampa looking at, one in Plant City, and then we have two in South County. But to finalize countywide, I also work with the county commissioners. I just talked to Stacy White the other day and Mariella this week, Mariella Smith. I talked to Pat Kemp frequently. So I, I deal a lot with, with outside government officials. So you know, a little bit quiet on it. I, some, sometimes people make noise with who they see and who they meet, but I kinda just don't. But getting things done Jessica, but countywide, that's a great question. It's a whole different ballgame than a district.
All right. So I'm going to ask your district number again, your seat number, just so when people are looking on the ballot or when they want to find it. And then I'll roll on to Ken to see if he has any questions. What seat, what district or seat number, if people are looking for you on the ballot, what's that district number?
It's going to say seven.
Seven.
Yeah.
Okay. So Ken, just based on kind of what Lynn has talked about, is there any, are there any questions that you have or anything that you want to follow up with?
No, not at this point. I do have a question though for Ms. Gray, I guess. You know, and I've been, one of the reasons I like doing this is that it forces me to go out and research things that I probably wouldn't have looked at before. You know, one of the things that concerns me, looking at a couple of things, there's a list that the Florida, Florida puts out, which is the failed schools list, I guess is the best way to put it for people to understand it. And looking at it last year, we had, looks like thirty, in Hillsborough, thirty-nine schools that had a C or below grade. They seem to be very high percentage of disadvantaged children at, at these schools. And my question is what, what are we, the school board trying to do about correcting that? Because that was the largest number of any county in the state of Florida.
Well, I mean, that's a, it's a big question, but it's a very important question, Ken. On the front side, in my own mind, I don't believe that we should have any failing school. Because, and Jessica knows this, all children can learn to succeed. We just have to find the areas that they're best in and bring that out. Well, the Florida standards has put us all in a conundrum because now you have a validation of a test score. And then you have a population of, I'm going to say ELL, English Language Learners. Some of them do not have the language enough to even read the test questions. Coupled with many, many, too higher percentile who cannot read, much less comprehend the questions. I was at Sulfur Springs, for example, in giving out a simulation for the FSA, the Florida Standards Assessment Test. Kids sat there with that piece of paper, ten questions. Some of them were very, very polite. But this was out of seventeen, I would say maybe three or four knew how to read. The rest of them just sat there. They couldn't read.
That sounds about my experience in some of the, the failing schools as well.
With that being the case, I know reading is, is certainly one of the points that you make on your website as, as being very important. But as a, a school board member, what can and what is the school board doing to correct this issue?
Well, it's been very dicey at most. Recognizing that phonics, for example, is very doable and very, it has a lot of efficacy in helping kids to read. We only had six, I think, six class, six schools who participated in phonics. That's a way of pre-literacy and actually up to first grade, helping them read. We, we had, according to our previous superintendent, we had a huge outreach of these achievement schools and a lot of the resources, and this is human resources, a social worker, a school psychologist, and a lot of the problems that kids were having were social emotional. They came to school hungry. They come to school not having proper clothes. You know, they're poor. Sixty-four percent of our population are poverty or below poverty level. And a lot of these children that we have in our district are, are coming to school with, and now don't, don't get too excited with trauma, but it's called adverse childhood experiences. They're not ready to learn. Now, what are we doing about it? So each school of those schools you mentioned, I think it was maybe up to fifty, we gave them restorative practices and resources, such as the school psychologist and the, the effective teachers beings, like for instance, Jessica would be at those high need schools because she is a better teacher. She's received highly effective on her evaluation. So anyway, you pump each school up with resources, both human and in terms of learning resources. I think there's expeditionary learning, Jessica. We had that at six schools. They loved it. I don't know whether you had that. Oh, wait a minute, you subbed. But Forest Hills and some of those schools had books that really were interactive. So in a nutshell, Ken, we took the schools that had the low scores and put a lot of effort in the quality of teaching and the administration, the principals. But we also saturated it with, you know, an extra reading coach, an extra math coach, psychologist again, and social worker. So the affective and effective areas were, were addressed for the kids. Now, is it working? Well, depends on who you ask. Marlene Sacco was, went through the roof when we had those reading scores. They were very low and.
Who's a reporter. She's a reporter who, who reports on the school board for people.
Okay, you don't know Marlene?
No, it's for our listeners, for our listeners.
Oh, yeah. So anyway, and I just bring her up because she's a, she loves to see, the reading is a real big emphasis of hers as well. And she does publish, but she published the scores. And school board members, me, I, I was flawed. I was just, my, you know, mouth was open just to see the scores. They were very low. And then my reaction was I want to see, now this would be last summer. I wanted an intense workshop, I mean, a school, an educational, like a, like, I want to say camp, but a, a reading camp, whatever you want to call it. But it was, it was done in another few counties. So I wanted it done for those kids that are below reading level. Well, long story short, you can only do as a board member what the superintendent is, has a will to do. And be it right or wrong, the emergency that you and I and probably Jessica would agree with wasn't the same for his staff and him. So you know, and one of the reasons we got a new superintendent was what we're just discussing right now. We, we had a, we were very weak in our staff. And in my mind, we should have done, I mean, we, we, we failed. We failed these kids. And it wasn't because he didn't try. And you, you know, I, you're not supposed to blame one person, but the leader is the person, the bottom line, it goes up to the top. And so a long story, but, but that's, there was a failing of leadership and, and that, and our kids failed. And that's, it's a very, it's a crime. It should not happen. Because, well, I'll let you guys ask questions. I can go on and on about that.
I know that. Well, I guess my concern, looking at the statistics and looking at that list, is this is not just a, this is a long-term problem for all of those schools. I mean, none of them have scored higher than a C. But you, you said you have changed, the superintendent has changed. That was last year, correct?
Yeah.
So before, before we further talk about the failing schools, because those, those are important. Lynn, tell me just in general, for our listeners who don't know, what the school board is, you know, you said that there are some things that the school board doesn't have scope over. What the scope is, how it works with, with our superintendent, so that people understand. Because I have so many people who really don't even understand what the school board does or what it's capable of affecting. So let's start there.
So when you look at the school board, they should follow the guidelines. We follow the Florida School Board Association, FSB, yeah, FSBA. And we're supposed to only work on policy in terms of the best ways of working. So an example would be a policy on discipline. One time we had zero tolerance. If the child was, you know, rude or whatever, he would be, or she would be asked to leave and would be suspended. So you know, now we have changed that policy from a zero tolerance to a recorded amount of referrals, if you will, but that, and then the, the difference is, so if you use the policy for the school board, the superintendent does the procedure. So for example, if we did zero tolerance, then he or she would work out how that would be done in all the schools, the procedures. We are not supposed to get involved with procedure. That's, that's what he's hired or she's hired for. The other big part is the fiduciary. That means the money spent. So you know, anything that's spent needs to be looked at in my mind. But say you have an item of three hundred thousand dollars, say it's for, the future would be for masks, you know, face masks. So should we meet with that vendor? Should we talk with that vendor? Not really. We, we have a CFO, Chief Financial Officer, who again, has procedures that are guided by the superintendent as to how this vendor will put in a bid and those kinds of things. The problem happens is when fiduciary board members overstep and start wheeling and dealing with vendors. It's not supposed to happen.
Yeah, we're going to ask about that later too.
Same thing with policy. You know, we're not supposed to tell the superintendent how to proceed, but we're supposed to change on the other side of the coin, the policy. Now, it sounds quite dull, but each of us, this is a good school board, each of us have a value. So for my example, you know that I'm educational and very much involved in instruction. The instructional budget is the largest in our fiduciary scope. So I pay attention to the budget very closely.
So let me ask you, when you say the budget for instruction, are you talking materials that teachers use? Are you talking classroom books that they order? What does that encompass?
So that's teacher salaries.
Okay.
And that's a lot right there. And of course, the resources such as textbooks and technology. But that's the biggest part of our budget. So you know, and when we say teachers, then we have to throw in, you know, now you have other things, coaches and reading coaches.
Support staff, sure.
Yeah. Years ago, we didn't have any of that. We had a department head, you know, and, but anyway, that's, a lot of these new positions came from the Gates Grant. But to put it simply, it's a, it, we're supposed to work more in the lane of policies and what policies we set forth. And we're supposed to be very careful with money being spent. So we don't get into a bad fund balance. We just lost our, our rating. We went down, I think about two points, which is not good.
Now that, let's back up a little bit for our listeners, because there's some things I want to make sure that we clarify. When we talk about our rating, that's talked about, like, our, that means like our, our payment history and how, what have, basically what a good borrower we are as far as money is concerned. Is that right?
Yeah. Yeah. How, just look at your personal credit. How, how good is your credit, right? I mean, we need to have a very strong fund balance because it shows that we are spending wisely. And we also are making sure the future is, is there for expenditures and we're prepared for emergencies such as a hurricane. Now you have your coronavirus, you know. So we're, the budget is huge. You know, that's why Jessica, when I asked for the referendum in March two thousand eighteen, we were very low. Our fund balance was very low and our, we were very close to not being able to pay salaries. And you remember the air conditioning wasn't working and building roofs were falling in. So, and then just recently I did the impact fees with CTA and, and Betty Castor. So we had those raised. So I'm always looking for money.
So, so when we say impact fees, we mean when developers develop communities or when there's expansion, that those developers or whoever is expanding pays more fees for the infrastructure such as building schools if they develop a community or supporting the schools that they're in. So as growth happens, they pay for a portion of the, the educational needs or whatever the city or the county incur, correct?
That is, that is very well said. Yes. So we were five thousand and something and we went up to eight thousand. We were the lowest in all of the surrounding counties with requiring the requirements for impact fees. So that was an important, it's an important bit of money, but it just goes for capital funds to, you know, new school board, new school buildings.
New school, okay. The other question I had is, can you affect the curriculum?
Oh, I, I think so. I, I, this, this to me is the fun part. You know, it depends on your superintendent. I don't know whether Mary Ellen, which by the way, she was my reading specialist in the eighty-five.
Who was a, before the superintendent, we had, we have one now. We had one previously, Jeff Akins. And then she was the one before that. And there was controversy because she didn't get along with the school board. There was a lot of odds. And then I think that they eventually seceded in making sure that she was no longer our school board member. And then I think we still had to pay out her contract, even though she went up north to teach, I think, or to, to, but anyway, and then she won an award, I think, right after she left us. But aside from that, I'm sorry, you were saying.
Now, actually I speak to Mary Ellen once in a while as well for guidance. I, I use the previous superintendents when I got on the board, just so you know, to help me deal with my lane, if you will. That was very important. But at any rate, where were we?
Curriculum, curriculum, sorry. That was my fault.
Oh, curriculum. Yeah. So I mean, let's look at the black history or let me skip back. Let's see, I did the restorative practices. I brought in, when I say I, it's the staff, the superintendent nods its head. Yes, you can have staff Lynn Gray and we will have them, you know, recommend procedures to me and then I will carry it out. So my, the big white elephant, when I got on the board was disciplined. So I did the affective, the restorative practice where we prevent more misbehavior by rewarding good behavior. And it's called PBIS, which is the Preventive Behavior Incentive Support System from USF. It's a national restorative practice. So I put that, and when I say I, it's easier for me to say I than all the staff, but let me just, we were, the staff put that into practice.
You can say we.
So you know, effectively, I thought that was important. Now, effectively, discipline, now we have a new superintendent, he's going to handle it accordingly. But there were some lapses, I felt like, because you know, again, I've been in the system for a long time. And I was disappointed when I got back and got to be a school board member at, at what was going on or what was not going on. So you know, I, I did some changes or the staff did some changes. And you know, I, I'm sure later on the interview, I'll share some things that I did that's, now this is all district wide. When I do things is district wide, because that's, that's the difference between, you know, some of the other board members and myself.
Right. So can I, can I, can I reword what I'm understanding and you tell me if it's correct? Is that maybe when a lot of people think of curriculum, what they're thinking are specifically the standards and that's set by the state legislation. So while you can't affect the standards that are, you know, part of the curriculum, what you can do is focus on different pieces that kind of fill in those standards to help affect how those standards are taught. Or you know, if there's a standard that talks about something in history, making sure, like you said, that you're focusing on black history and filling in those gaps would be the way to affect curriculum, even though you're not affecting the standards? Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah. And if we back up another step, one of the, one of the duties or expectations of a school board member is the welfare of the students, you know. Uh, or expectations of a school board member is the welfare of the students, you know, welfare. So. Uh, you can, you can liberate that word and make it uh, applicable to black studies. Is that, are we handling it for the welfare?
Right.
All of the diverse populations, you know what I'm saying? So. There's, there's that. It's, it's not cut and dry ever.
Sure. Right. Um, okay. Well, that helps me kind of give people an idea of the scope of the school board. So I didn't mean to cut you off, Ken. Um, we can kind of jump back more into specific questions, because I do, my next question is kind of to start talking about. Where we are financially, because a good portion, as you mentioned, of the school board is managing and balancing the budget. And if you talk to one person, they give you one idea about our financial health. But when you listen to the school board, sometimes there's a, there's a different concern about whether or not we're, you know. In a place where we need to start making cuts based on things financially. So I want to talk about the financial health of our school district. But I want to make sure, since I kind of backtracked Ken up, that he doesn't have any additional questions either on what we talked about or what you guys were talking about. So we can make sure we cover everything. Ken?
No, I really don't have any questions. Y'all were. Pretty clear about the, about the subject, uh, and I thought it was a very good discussion. Um. So let's go ahead. The, you know, the discussion of the finances, I think, is important.
Okay, thanks. Um, so yeah, tell me Lynn, where we are. I know, like you mentioned, we were in financial problems. And you know, it's very hard to kind of dig through and figure out where those started. But I know we had kind of mentioned before how the, the Gates Foundation grant that we had definitely changed. You know, our financial outlook, because we had a whole bunch of money and some infrastructure created. And then when that grant ended. Um, we were still in charge of funding that. And I know we also had some issues with our school buses and there were some. Some loans that we took out for the school buses. So, and we mentioned our air conditioning. So when, when. Now, right now, with that extra tax that we got, the referendum to fund us, where would you say we are financially as a school board?
All right. Well, that's a, that's a finite answer. Um, so where are we at? Uh, in, in a, in a nutshell, uh, because of Florida legislative dealing with the coronavirus. We, we are kind of like not knowing yet. I would say a ten percent to fifteen percent. Reduction of state monies. Um, but I can explain a little bit, um, because you brought up some really good points, some historical points. Uh, and when I say historical, uh, for the last, you know, since uh, um, Superintendent Ilya with the Gates Grant. Um, actually, I was talking about this this morning. If you think about it. You get a grant and remember, we all know that grants always come with um, you know, uh, expectations that have to be documented. And of course, personnel that has to be paid for. So then the grant. Um, we, we got out of the grant, but we kept the positions under Akins. Now you might ask, well, why didn't we um. Shave the positions from that grant then?
Right.
Why is this superintendent having to do it now? So that's one concern. Um, but we kept those positions and we took money out of our savings and uh, some money was taken out of our capital funds. So you're really robbing Peter to pay Paul for the positions. And mind you, I had two principal coaches that told me, Lynn, I don't need this position. I don't even do anything. Uh, it's a waste of the district money. I mean, you know, because. Again, when you grow up in a school system, you get a lot of friends who, who grow up with you and I, I do get a lot of uh. I do get a lot of feedback uh, continually. And it's, it's honest feedback for the most part. But anyway. One of the things that we have now, we're going to look at a reduction, okay? And then that's, I don't know what that's going to look like, Jessica. I'm scared to. Yeah, to see what, we don't know what the salaries are. Uh, everyone's asking about the salary. Um. CTA is being very mindful, as you can imagine. Um, so we're, we're not at a point where we can say um. Ten percent or fifteen percent across the board, but this is so. Uh, I will tell you.
So let me just back up and I'm not sorry, I'm not trying to interrupt you, but when you say a reduction. You're saying a reduction in staff? You mean letting teachers go or you can't cut salaries or are you talking about cutting salaries?
Well, a reduction and when we have a reduction in monies coming in from taxes and impact fees. Then some, uh, part of our budget has to be uh, reduced. So what does that mean? That means that. What we expend on, for example, um, more technology. Maybe we can't go with the big plan that we would like to.
Okay, so you meant reduction just overall, not specifically with teachers or something with staff?
No. Again, the, the instructional staff, and this is what we really enjoy about this superintendent. He is super duper focused on instruction. And loves the teachers. So he's, he, he's, he's going to be the, well. I can't tell you for sure, but I'm almost guarantee, that's one of the reasons I was so excited. He's a pro teacher employee wellness person. So. But I wanted to jump in before I, I tell you all the horrible things, uh, or not horrible, but the. The maybe things of our budget cuts. One of the things that has been a huge benefit with our last superintendent and. Mary Ellen Ilya, uh, before that is our business partners. Um, if they haven't, hadn't come in the way they are, they're very powerful now in terms of their monetary um, gifts. I don't know what we would do. Um, I mean, just look at uh, Titus O'Neil giving Sly. Oh, golly, fifty thousand dollars, uh, not long ago. Um, and, and he's still going with food, giving food and. But I mean, we have so many great business partners and uh, they have filled up a lot of the gaps. When we didn't, when we were low at money and they're still, they're still there for us. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Um, Jeff Akins was very, very good with the business partners. Um, and Mary Ellen was very strong. So that's, now what's new is now we have our county commissioners working with us. So you see, there's the yin and yang. You, you, we're going to have cuts because of this virus. But now we have perhaps more alliances that will help us monetarily. Um. So I, I, I try to be optimistic. I don't want to frighten our teachers and um, you know, because.
Help me understand, when, when you say cuts, and I hear Ken has a question, so we'll follow with that. Do you mean because there's kind of a recession and, you know, funding is, is counted on by. I, I mean, did the, the state legislation already decide how much they're giving us and now they're reneging? Like, how does the virus affect? The state funding that we get? And because that's where the shortfall is coming from. Our property taxes, have they changed? Is, when you say the shortfall, is that specifically from the state or is that from the county?
Okay, it's from the state. And just think of it like this. You pay taxes, you live in a house, you pay your. Uh, and, and you pay taxes, but what happens is when you lose your job, um. And a lot of people have, and then you don't get your unemployment checks, you're not paying, you're not paying taxes. You can't. You don't have money. So a lot of these people cannot pay and they're not, the, so the state's not getting the revenue that they're. You know, they're used to having. Now, people are still buying houses, so I, I, I know that. But a lot of folks are getting, they're broke. Um, and it's very scary. So state revenue, when it goes down, when their uh, big pot of money goes down. And then we have to, they have to decide how, how much goes to each county. Of course, we're the seventh largest. There is going to be, you know, they have to. Look at a different type of forecast, because their, their money's down, if you see what I'm saying.
Sure.
Um, federal, now federal money, um, right now you're looking at that as well. Remember the big argument. Uh, with Como and the federal government, uh, not helping with the city, I mean, with the state, with uh, paying for the teachers, the, the. Uh, the police, uh, the firemen, you know, so the states are running out of money because the federal government is not. Putting in the money, um, that the states need, because the states have used a lot of their monies for this virus. Uh, and now the people, that's you and I, local, local folks. Many of them are unemployed, uh, and they don't have the money to pay for taxes. So, and it, it just goes on. It's a big. You know, I, I don't even know how many people are unemployed right now, but it's huge and high. So, you know, that's what happens.
Ken, it sounded like you had a question.
Well, I, I was just jumped over and looking right now at the uh, financial KPIs. Um, that the, the board uh, puts out. And one thing I've noticed here is that from two thousand sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, we were spending about ninety-six percent. On uh, direct classroom instruction. This last year it dropped to ninety-three percent. Do you see that dropping? I mean, based on, on. I mean, the, the overall dollars may drop, but are we still going to be working to. To, for, to put the majority of that funds to classroom instruction?
Well, you know, that, that is the goal, uh, because that's, that's the best model is. You know, we're, we're in the business of education, educating our students, and it's done through instruction. Uh, and the conduit is our teachers. Now, what we're looking at now with this virus. Are we going to have less teachers? Well, now we're looking at a hybrid, right? Because there's going to be more online, virtual. And probably less face to face, but, but as Jessica notes, oh, wait a minute, you're, you're subbing, but. Teachers are still working their heads off, trying to make lessons exciting, you know, making lessons and. On the Zoom, they're teaching lessons. So there's still the same amount of instruction. Um, where I want to tell you also, getting back to less money, so say that, and then this goes to intended attendance. So FTE, full-time equivalent. If you don't have a classroom full of kids, say you have twenty-five children. And say it reduces down to ten kids. So now you're talking less money, because the state gives you a certain amount of money per pupil in the seats, cheeks in the seats. If you have less cheeks in the seats, you get less money. Now, that's going to be a governor's decision. Are we going to be. Penalized, uh, in a punitive way financially, because we know so, social distancing. Has to be done and we're not going to pack our, you know, kids in the classrooms. So logic would support that, no, we're not going to do that. We're not going to have, you know, a full classroom anymore right now for a while. Maybe not until we have a vaccine. So you see, i- i- it is a very good question. And it's all. All this is under discussion. We, we have not. This is a time when we've never been in, uh, so it's very fluid.
Well, then you, you, what, from what you're, you're saying, then you anticipate this kind of uh, virtual learning situation to become the norm? Is that the, do you consider that probably for the next year or two years? Or what, what is the board having discussion about this as a?
You know, I asked the board, I wanted to brainstorm some possible scenarios, but I was not, um. It was not a popular, um, by two or three members, because they want to wait till the governor. And my argument was to say, well, we should narrate, we're the seventh largest in the country. Maybe we need to be making. Making sure that we are proactive and sharing what is best for us and then sharing that with the governor. Because I think we need to be, you know, talking about this.
I would agree with you a hundred percent.
I do. And I, here I am. I mean, I have all kinds of plans. I have principals giving me what would work in their school. I have the magnet schools. Giving me what works in their school. High schools, uh, can, you know, look at them. I mean, aren't we getting really near to a model of uh. Uh, HCC, right? High schools are, whether we agree or not, a lot of them do online anyway. But the middle school folks, I mean, my goodness, and how about the kindergarten, first and second grade? Virtual learning for them? I, I don't think it's, I don't know whether it's uh, doable. So. Um, yeah, we've got a lot of hiccups coming up. Um. But we need to be talking about it.
Um, so I would like to say, um, while I am subbing right now, most of my friends are teachers, family members are teachers. Um. You know, what I was surprised about during this transition was there wasn't a lot of infrastructure in place for them. Once the virtual school started, like there wasn't a mandate of this is how many Zoom meetings you should have, because we're expecting you to interact with your students. Or any expectations of how much they should be interacting with their students, what the curriculum should look like. I know different teachers at different school. Got different feedback from different principals about how they should be grading their students, what they should be entering in. So I do believe that regardless of what the governor mandates, we should be building that infrastructure. So if that's what we roll into into the next school year. We have in place for teachers to be able to support them. Expectations and infrastructure of what that might look like. If you don't need it, great, you know. But just to make sure that we're not leaving our teachers out there floundering, adding more stress to the parent, and for parents, you know. Parents want to know what it's going to look like and what to expect. So it surprises me that there isn't more buy-in from. More school board members on making sure that they're prepared for the next school year, if it's going to look similar to what we've already had.
Well, and, and I just want to throw out two things that you just pointed out. How do we prepare the teachers? Well. For instance, we should be ordering thermometers. We should be ordering masks.
Right.
You know, I have already vendors throwing prices at me for these things, because other school districts are already ordering those things. So. For, you know, so there's not a shortage to prepare for the teachers to, to do what they need to do. And, and, and on the e-learning, you know, uh, let's see, North Carolina. Um, I work with the trauma, uh, the National Dropout Prevention. He's a superintendent as well. I don't know how he does it all. But um, he, they, they've been doing e-learning for over a year. So they're very sophisticated at it. Uh, we just started in, when did we start? Uh, in February or, yeah, we, we, yeah, March. But we, we were planning, I know, I remember the staff planning, maybe it was in January, February. And even the, you know, Jason Ferg, the whistleblower is asking me, well, Lynn, did we start this because. We were mandated to do e-learning or did we, or were we proactive in starting it? And, you know, then you can argue, well, we really weren't mandated. Why weren't we prepared? Why weren't we doing this? Uh, because what about a hurricane if it cut all the, I don't know, you know, there's emergencies that happen. Why aren't we ready? Uh, for this before it happens, that kind of thing. So I'm, I'm a big. Well, you know, being an educator, we're, we're very proactive. We, we need to, we think of everything, because anything could happen. So anyway, that's. The, that's in parentheses.
What concerns me is that the, we've been thrown into this situation, but this is something that we've seen coming down the road. For some time. I mean, business does business virtually. You know, virtual meetings are nothing new in the business world. Our people need to be prepared for being able to conduct those kind of meetings. This, we, our, our teachers need to be prepared to be able to teach this. And, and going on, our, our. Our parents need guidance. And they're looking to the teachers for that kind of guidance. And unfortunately. We've just kind of been caught flat-footed.
Yeah, actually, and, and Ken, to your point about the parents, now think about it, how. Uh, there was a remark about, oh, parents can't be teachers. Well. When that remark was said aloud during a meeting, I thought, hey, who are your first teachers when you're a baby? The parent is your, is the, is your first teacher. That's who, the, the parents don't have to. They just have to be a role model to lead and to, you know, to make sure that they say. Oh, it's time for your lesson. Let's get started. Let's do this, you know, and stay on top of them. But right now, this is a, to your point. We don't have a parental buy-in with e-learning. That's what's missing. And, and Jessica might want to remark on that. Our parents, a lot of them just gave up on the, uh, in the inner-city schools, and I know that from principals, they tell me.
Absolutely. Not even just in inner-city schools. I have friends that teach in all socio-economic, all geographical distances. And there are subset of parents in every single one of those schools that have just given up.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to remark a few more things about specifically dealing with the COVID response. And then I want to kind of do like a little bit of a lightning round. Because we're getting close to an hour, but there's some questions that I want to kind of at least address. So even if we can't get really fully into them. Just have an answer one way or another, so we can make sure that we uh, talk about those. But I think one thing that would have definitely, um, or that we could do in the future that would help parents is set up a site with tools to help uh support parents. You know, I have some parents that really just organizing their day for a student is something that I can't wrap their heads around. So even putting up like, it's not specific to the curriculum, but like a sample of what a day would look like, you know, breakfast at this time. You know, focus on this at this point, have a have a movement or a lunch period here. And and offer them some tools to help them become educators if that's not their forte. And the other piece that I think is important is really making sure that we're communicating with teachers to get the feedback about what was successful, what wasn't successful, what their challenges were. Like, I hope there's a survey being created where we're getting direct feedback from 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 teachers. Because they should have a major say-so in figuring out what it's going to look like next year. Because they're on the front lines, you know, figuring out what the challenges are. So making sure that we're strengthening that line of communication and that they have a huge influence and a big voice in making sure we're prepared, I think is important. But um, I want to go ahead and ask about kind of how our schools are funded and equitable funding. Because I know when we're talking about a lot of the F or failing schools, a lot of the times that they're more in working class or impoverished neighborhoods, where right out of the gate, they're just not getting the same kind of financial support. They're not getting the same kind of community support. A lot of these communities have been devastated by racist and you know, classes policies from a far-gone error, and they're trying to rebuild. So one of my questions is, when we think about how we can support schools, you know, or students that don't necessarily have a level playing field right from the beginning. It seems to me like the way that we fund schools in general starts from a place of inequity. I mean, if you're talking about funding things based on property taxes. And that therefore, schools that are in, you know, neighborhoods where they have more money and access to resources right off the bat, get more equitable, you know, get more funding. Is there a way to, and is it controlled by the county or is this a state thing? Is there a way that we can advocate as a county or, you know, um, even as citizens to change the way that those property taxes are allocated to specific schools? And even if that's our source of refund, can we reallocate a source of income? Can we reallocate it so that it's an equal dispersment and different schools don't have different funding?
Well, we do. Uh, actually, different schools, and that's a very good question. Um, one, a few years back, um, I had a a member of the NWACP ask every school uh for a list of how much they're funded. And the inner-city schools, now many of them were funded more, uh, but not all, not all.
The inner-city schools were funded more?
The inner-city schools um were funded by us now, not by, I'm not saying uh PTA and community, but by us. So the there is, there is a, there definitely a formula that puts more equity money into those schools of need. However.
Right.
However, remember this, we we rely also, uh, our business partner. Our, such as Casper's and, and I I go right back to Thaddeus Bullard. But we have great business partners that does junior achievement, you know. They they give so much to these schools in need. Um, the biggest part of the inequity is when, is when we do not put the best teachers and the best resources and keep that going, not just for one year to make it look good. It has to be sustained. A lot of times, and you know this, Jessica, you get a good principal. And by the time he does really, or she does good, real good, uh, they're out of there to the next job.
Absolutely, yeah.
Sustaining the the quality of educators and the monies.
Right.
Has to be done, not just one year. It has to be year after year after year. And the community has to be involved in the school. Uh, when I visited the transformation schools in Pinellas, it was Dr. Betty Reed. She was from uh Washington DC, one of the best minds in the country to change schools. She said it has to be, the first thing that a a inner-city or a marginalized community school must have is a hundred percent community buy-in.
Absolutely.
The community has to be there for those kids. Because they can come up with the money, they can come up with human resources for tutoring, if you see what I'm saying. They can come up with uh extra, um, let's say, computers needed. That, because there's, there's a finite amount of money or in our budget, right? For keep on pouring money in, uh, and it has to be to sustain it. I mean, that's a big, that's a big word right there, is sustainability. And I, I'm looking for that. I'm, I mean, that's what I'm looking for. These kids get so many different faces in front of them. Teachers change, principals change. It's, it's just so transient in itself. So, you know, if you're going to build a structure, an infrastructure, you got to make it last. And and we, I mean, we have a mayor who's willing to put beautiful sidewalks and change the, you know, the the environment.
Sure.
Outside. And she wants to do that. Mayor Castor wants to do it for Sulphur Springs.
Sulphur Springs need it. I interned in there for my degree, and they definitely need some sidewalk improvements.
Yeah.
Miss, Miss Gray, I I mean, I I agree with the sustainability. Why, why are we so transient? Why as putting people, teachers and principals and all of that? Why is it such a transient environment? Isn't that something the school board can address?
Well, I I definitely agree. Now, the the real, realistically, look at the school board members. Some of them may want to become a county commissioner. Some of them might want to become something else. You've got someone like myself who, you know, I'm I'm just there because I want to serve. I'm not going anywhere. I love what I'm doing. But you got transient in the actual board. Then you have transient in the leadership. So superintendents last, they say, up to five, eight years. Uh, and 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 we would like to have this man, Davis, should he be doing well. I'd like to have him for ten years. Um, but we we can hope. But then you have the school leadership. What, that, that's something that needs to be controlled. Uh, Ken, you have an excellent point. Principals revolving around like, you know, a carousel, one to another. It's simply not working. It's simply not working. And PBIS or any restorative practice, try it out. Let's try it out, Jessica, in your school. Let's do it for a year. And then after a year, we'll see what happens. Now, that's not good. You know, so, and you got to have processes. But it has, the foundation has to be so strong and it has to be able to be sustainable. Otherwise, don't do it. But I, uh, yeah, I'm, I've seen superintendents come and go. Go ahead.
Well, you 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 also, I I think frankly, and this is a problem that business has all the time, you know, you you have to pay people well and you, to keep them on and to keep them doing the things that you, and and frankly, I, that's another subject we probably don't need to get in. It's a rabbit hole.
Um, well, I'd like to give feedback as an educator, um, because even though I'm subbing, I'm a certified teacher and I taught for for a few years before I had my son and and went to sub because it was more flexible. Um, and I could still stay in the classrooms. But generally, you get out of college, you have your degree, so you know, you're an inexperienced teacher. And the first place that you're going to get a job is in a Title One or a Renaissance school because they have the most openings, you know. Um, so you have brand-new first-year teachers who don't have a lot of experience working at some of our most challenging schools with some of our, you know, unfortunately, because they haven't had the support and the resources. You know, some of our lowest learners. And you have a lot of teachers where if that's their first experience, right when they get out of college, they honestly don't make it past a couple of years, you know, brand-new teachers working at some of our most challenging schools where you need the most support and you don't always have it. Isn't a good recipe for sustainability when you're talking about keeping the same teachers in the same classrooms, working with those populations, honestly.
No, I mean, and and if if you take the model, uh, the opposite model, uh, say, uh, like a Jesuit. Um, you know, they don't let the teachers fail. I mean, they do everything they can to make sure the teachers are well taken care of. Now, that's a small school. It's a private school. But I've seen schools that take very, uh, principals that take so much care for their first-year teachers. And then you have principals that, like you say, uh, from maybe desperate need or for whatever reason, they'll put them into the, you know, the the pen, the lion's den. And it's, it's just, that's not workable.
I mean, it's not, it's not even just that you're you're working with, you know, you know, different students, you know, who a lot of times don't have the the emotional or the financial support the other students do. So you have right there, like you said, a lot of the times, you're more than just the teacher, you're the parent. You're taking care of skin conditions, you're finding coats for kids in the classroom, you're trying to, you know, make sure that they have food when they go home, if, you know, they get free and reduced lunch. So that's your main priority. And then teaching comes subset to that. But, you know, when I've worked in Renaissance schools, just access to materials, you you know, we say they have equitable funding. But getting, you know, paper to make copies or making sure that I have enough, um, you know, a hand sanitizer or that I have the the books that are not falling apart. When you go to more, you know, suburban, well-funded schools, you know, the lights aren't burnt out in the bathroom. You have hand soap when you need it. You don't have to, you know, ration your copies. So on top of already being more than just a teacher to the students, you are lacking the resources, just physical resources you need to do your job.
And and that's a, that's a very big uh point of contention with me. I've been to some of those schools, light bulbs, dirty floors. Uh, and 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 I I know what happens when you have an operations director who does not make sure every school is pristine. Because you know, uh, Jessica and Ken, a school environment makes kids feel one way or another. And and that should never happen. Dirt in this, uh, you know, in the classrooms from the Sandy area, Commons area. I mean, and and classrooms being held in closets, custodian closets. We didn't go on and on. Uh, how does that happen? And and these are achievement schools or whatever you want to call them. That should never be the case. So we got to clean that up. Uh, that is, well, you know what? Because of the coronavirus, it will have to be. It will have to be clean and disinfected. But um, but yeah, that's a big, that's a very good point.
As a teacher, what it feels like, and I'm just giving feedback as a teacher, and I'm not saying this is true. But as a teacher, what it feels like is that, you know, a majority of school board members, not not you, Lynn Gray, um, cater to their constituency that they feel like are going to vote. And that when it's coming time to really fight and advocate for prioritizing things on the school board, the school board members are going to vote, fight for the for the communities that vote. And unfortunately, the, you know, the adage is, is that those communities don't vote. So why should we pay attention to their needs or fund them or, you know, make them a priority? Because, you know, I have all of my suburban schools that when it comes time for reelection are going to be more concerned about whether they had a crossing guard. So we don't need to really worry about whether Sulphur Springs has paper or not because they don't vote. So that's what it feels like as a teacher, is that a lot of school board members.
I can see that.
You know, pander to their voting populations. But unfortunately, we need to get to uh the uh, the most contentious part of our interview, I would think. And not necessarily with you, but I think just in education in general is public funding, charter schools, um, you know, the move to privatize education. You know, as someone who pays a lot of attention to the school board, I know that a lot of what's happening as far as privatization is done at the state level. And you have a lot of school board members who will say, we don't have a lot of control over this. Because, you know, if the state's allocating all those funds for charter schools, our hands are tied. But when you look back at our record in Hillsborough County with charter schools and you look back at a lot of the donations that have been tied to school board members who have been very vocal and very aggressive about approving charter schools. It seems like this um sign-on to moving from public school model to, you know, for-profit charter schools really has been aggressive in Hillsborough County before the state legislation kind of moved more towards that and mandated it. So what are your thoughts specifically when it comes to this kind of new thought process of moving away from supporting public education, privatizing education? Pro, you know, prioritizing charter schools and what that's going to look like, especially when we're talking about the inequity that we already have. Is that something that's going to create more inequity? I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, I mean, looking at my voting record on charter schools, it's usually a no. And and the reason I don't is because, nothing personal, but I want the same accountability and the same oversight and the same equitable conditions uh that we expect as the traditional in our magnet. Now, um, when that's not had, uh, and I visit some of these charters without a media center, without a lab, and they're calling themselves a science and technology, and they're borrowing equipment from a, one of our high schools. You know, it it does bother me. I I know that we pay a lot of money for their application. And I know we pay a lot of money in the end result because we lose FTE, full-time equivalent, from our pri- uh, our regular traditional schools. And then a lot of times when the charter folks, I mean, the kids are tired of their charter, the parents are, they send them back to our traditional. But at the same time, we have to be more competitive. Our traditional public school education, we've got to keep up uh with the innovative methods. And we've got to compete in marketing. I mean, how good are we? We're just, we're not a good, braggish set of uh schools. We don't, we we brag, but no one hears us now. It's really bad now because we only have Marlene out there doing every bit of educational articles. Um, and we have Face, Facebook Live. But we have to look at ourselves and say, hey, are we that good? Or I I know we are. I mean, because we have every bit of infrastructure. We have nurses, we have psychologists, we have great teachers. We have great principals. We have the training, professional development. I know that we're great, but but we have to make sure the the public knows. And the charter schools do a brilliant idea, uh, example of uh marketing. I mean, they will market their heads off. And remember, there are excellent charter schools. I mean, look at Pepin.
Pepin's amazing, yeah, specifically for.
We developed them for the inner-city and we developed them for.
And there's Learning Gate. Learning Gate is a good charter school.
Learning Gate, yeah.
My, my question is, and and then I'll let, we'll go back to charter schools and funding because I I'm sure Ken has some questions about that. Um, is why, from my understanding, you know, from what I learned in college when I was an education major, charter or charter schools were originally established as a way to try new revolutionary ideas in learning as a safe place first. And then if those were successful, integrate those into our standards in our curriculum for our public schools. And what it seems like is, you know, people who want to profit from that want to, you know, instead, you know, kind of sell it that way, as you said, as innovative or whatnot, and really use it as an excuse to profit off education. But what I'm wondering is, when we're looking at charter schools, if if there were charter schools that were, you know, say, offering monastery programs or, you know, some of those other different ways of learning, especially for non-neurotypical learners, you know, kids who fall on the spectrum, have ADHD, have a learning disability, a physical disability. Some of these models of alternative education are so impactful and so um, successful when you come to those types of learners or even kids who have trauma, you know, where they have more autonomy and their learning and it's child-led. And right now, the only people who can access those kinds of things are people who privately pay for it and have money. Why aren't we making sure that the charter schools that we're approving are more towards what they should be and offer kind of that alternative education and different learning styles to people who can't access them to the public for free?
Yeah, I I I think um it's set up now um as a private industry in many corporate uh models to um, to make money. Um, and uh, that's, that's a problem. But I think where where the problem is, and I always get back to the two words of lack of oversight and accountability. You know, like discipline reports, testing reports, and how the teachers are uh graded or evaluated. All kinds of things of that nature, just like at the public schools. I think the solution is, why don't we get it fixed? Why don't we sit down, Mr. Corcoran, I'd love to sit down with you, have a committee. And let's, let's make sure it's even Stevens. Why would we want to not do that if we are? Why would we want to not do that if we are child-centered? Why would we not want every of school in this county to be an excellent one and accounted for and have the oversight? I, I'm looking at that, I'm ser- serious Jessica, as, as the solution. Um, and, and I, right now, it's not that way. And, and I understand, you know, business, right? We want to make a profit, but.
Not with education, though.
Yeah, I, I think most people see that as not right. You know, something's wrong there. And, and I, I, I have faith in the, in mankind when it comes to children, that, that we can find a way to make it right. Um, but I, I will tell you, uh, right now, it's not privatization when it comes to education. It's not, it doesn't, it doesn't match the affective, the nurturing and the, the real needs. I mean, teachers work 24/7 because they love what they're doing. They don't punch a time clock and neither do principals and APs. And, I mean, do you have that in the charter schools? You know, I would have to wonder. Um, so, you know, there's a lot to be said on that argument. Um, I'm hoping that this new superintendent is open to what I just said. Uh, let's sit down and let's, I actually told him that. I asked him, let's make it right. Um, because it's obvious that it's, it's skewed towards the charter industry and against our public. And it's, it's, it's killing us.
It, it also feels like it's engineered, that, you know, the people who are pro-charter school are also, you know, a lot of times in our legislation, a lot of the people who are elected officials have huge stakes in charter school companies and that they are purposely setting our public schools up to fail so that parents feel hopeless and now have no other choice but to buy into charter schools. And like you said, they have less oversight, less accountability. A lot of times, you know, they, they don't have the infrastructure needed and they come right back into our public school system. But when you look at how many failing schools we have, a lot of times it seems that the standards are sent and, you know, set, and we're so tied to, you know, testing to, to manage and to, you know, write our curriculum that it's this cycle to set us up to fail so that really parents have no choice. Because at the end of the day, parents don't really care about whether it's public or whether it's private or what the politics are. I mean, every parent just wants the same thing, you know, accessible, free, holistic, healthy education for their children. So, you know, that's where it feels sometimes like helpless in the fight to make sure you're advocating and fighting for public education. But that's just my soapbox. So Ken, what did, what, what, what questions did you have to follow up?
No, no, not a question, just a comment. You know, in, in some of my research here, I came across an article, uh, about the US News and World Report ranking schools. And in Hillsborough County, out of 18 spots, uh, 12 of the top 18 spots were filled by schools in Hillsborough County. But of that 12, only 11 were schools that were operated by the Hillsborough Public Schools and one charter school. That indicates to me that the charter school system is not effective. I mean, if they can only put one top school out of 12, if they were really effective, that would be much higher, I would think.
Well, you know, and Ken, remember charter schools is a, um, emergency stopgap, you know, because like our schools are filled to the brim, you know, they're exploding. So where do we have to put them? Well, the charter school gets built within, uh, six months and we stick them in there. I mean, or they go there. So, I mean, it's, it's not meant, in my view, a charter school is not meant for longevity. Um, many of them are not, uh, and, and that's a problem because we just talked about sustainability, right? We talked about, uh, being a school for an area and serving the community and the community serving the school. So it's really not set up for longevity. Uh, now Patel will argue, you know, because he put his inheritance in there and I know the, um, uh, Pepin, and there's exceptions, there's a lot of exceptions. But yeah, I, I, you know, I think about this emergency, i- it's really going to be a declaration of, uh, how well our public schools are doing because look what we're doing. We're, we're accommodating so much of the learning despite this. And look at the hurricanes. I mean, who do you think, where do they go? They go in our public schools for, uh, you know.
Not charter schools because their buildings don't have to be mandated to withhold hurricanes, talking about not being sustainable.
I know, literally, it's a very big, uh, but honestly, one thing before we end, I want these people who do not like charters or like public schools, they need to vote. You know, uh, our teachers are not on high record for voting. So, you know, Jessica, you know, it's, it's a very big problem. Seventeen percent of our voters come out for the primaries. And, and, you know, we hear it, but they, they have to vote.
When you, when I talk to teachers, you know, essentially they say they're too tired and too overworked to keep up with politics. Honestly, a lot of them, you know, if they get wind of the information or you engage them in a conversation, they have a lot of opinions. And, you know, if you say, hey, go vote here, but to keep up, I mean, the average citizen in general has a hard time navigating primary and runoffs and this date and every two years and four years and what mandates that. And teachers on top of it, you know, they're so overworked and so tired by the end of the day. Unfortunately, politics has very little room in their, their life. But.
Well, this is.
Hopefully that will change.
Think about changing the, the mail-in vote, right? You know, that's, makes it pretty easy. Uh, years ago, we didn't have that and you're right, we, we're very tired at the end of the day. But, you know.
For sure.
And that's the CTA. I want, I want Stephanie Baxter Jenkins, you know, to work on this. Be happy to work with her. Let's get them to vote.
Right.
To make those changes.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good idea of partnering up.
Local elections are huge for the impact of our future.
Absolutely. So we are kind of wrapping up near the end, um, of our, our interview. Um, the one last question I had, and then we'll ask Ken if he has anything. And then Lynn, if you have anything else you want to say, we'll kind of wrap it up. And then I want to talk about your individual race, you know, what the election dates are, how people can help you and get involved. My question, my closing question is, you know, a lot of feedback that I get now that we're talking also about teachers being engaged is that people don't really feel, even though it might not be through any fault of their own, that the school board has been extremely accessible. Especially when meeting times are on Tuesdays a lot of the time, which are the one days teachers are mandated to actually be at school and can't usually leave early when they have school meetings or whatnot to come and attend the meetings. Um, times have always been challenging. I know I've heard a lot of feedback that they've tried evening hours and that wasn't popular, but, you know, things have changed and I think we should try them again. Some people say that the website doesn't have as much information as, isn't as interactive as they would like. I know that for a little while, public comments were stricken from being aired in the meetings that are aired. So overall, a lot of the feedback that I get are people feel that the school board isn't accessible. What do you think are some ways, even like you said, it might not be through any fault of the school board, they might be doing the best they can, but technology has changed. Are things that the school board can do to, to build that relationship with the community for to, for to feel that they're more accessible, you know, and to really, um, have engagement with our community?
Well, I, I think, right, the first thing is, we've got to put parents and community as a priority. I, I, as a school board member, I, I, I love working with them. Um, I would say town hall meetings are huge. It doesn't matter if you have eight to 10 parents, it matters that those eight to 10 are there and their voices are heard. I think, I can do town halls, which I had scheduled all over the county, but the other part of the equation again is to the market. How does the school market and get to the parents, you know? And then of course, the parents are tired at the end of the day, so we got to get them in. But, but parents are so critical. And those town hall meetings, which I had many, uh, I, I enjoyed them. Um, that's one thing about the school board members now, you know, with the Zoom, I kind of mentioned, I have all these myself. And, I mean, I'm having a physical wellness forum, I have a Hispanic forum, I have a black forum, I have a sex trafficking, human trafficking forum. You know, I mean, I have all these committees, Hillsborough Healthy Schools, and I have communities in them. But, but is that enough? You know, I think we could do a much better job in having, uh, a time when the teachers, but then again, they're tired. But I'd love to have the teachers come in for public comment and dedicate, you know, an hour just listening to their needs, um, and, and then having time when the community comes in. Uh, it may be a mixture, but without those voices, what, what, how do we really operate without knowing? You know, how do you get to a goal if you don't know the steps and the reason to get to that goal? So you have to have the why, you know, why are you doing this? And that's comes from the parents and that comes from the, the students and the community.
Would you say, would you say we have a active social media, um, presence?
We, we have to do a much better job. I mean, we have five, what do we have, four public relation people? And I'm still scratching my head, wondering why we are not having more affect, uh, effective outreach. You know, so I, we can do a much better job with the, how about those full-service centers? Why, why do we just have two? Why not make, make them in every area of our district? You know, we did it with the hotspots. That was a great idea. One of the principals gave me, we put Wi-Fi hotspots in all the areas. Uh, that's, that's our new superintendent. He's a man of action. But, but yeah, we need more full-service areas where we can talk to parents. So, um, I, I, I think our board, for the most part, you know, um, are out there. Um, I know, I know they're doing their job because people tell me that they're out there. But if we're not listening, if you're hearing from teachers that we're not out there for them, then, then we have to do a better job getting to them. And, uh, and I'll, oh, I just wrote that down. We gotta, we gotta figure out what, what, what's the best way to get to the teachers and listen to them, um, than, you know, than what we're doing.
Right. Uh, Ken, do you have any closing questions?
Well, i- in the sake of time, I'm going to, um, I'm going to say no. I do have a lot of other questions about this subject. But, but I do want to say, Ms. Gray, thank you for joining us today and, and frankly answering our questions with, uh, with great candor and, and, um, I certainly do appreciate that. Uh, thank you for, for your time and, and hopefully, a lot of these things can be addressed through the board, um, moving forward. It's just, we see, I personally looking at some of those, just see a lot of issues, uh, accountability issues, as you talked about, um, you know, for charter schools. I mean, a mandated one visit a year to me seems totally inadequate. Uh, ex- accepting non-audited, uh, financial statements quarterly. Seems to be, uh, seems to be a lack of, I mean, I, I, I worked in contract management and, um, part of, a big part of my career, and those are just seemed as inadequate, um, accountability issues. So at any rate, but thank you again, and I certainly appreciate your time.
Well, thank you. I enjoyed it very much. Thanks for being a great listener as well.
Did you have anything that you wanted to add? Um, and like I said, we're going to talk about your race here in a moment and tell people how they, when they can vote for you and how to get involved. Is there anything that we've talked about, um, that you wanted to add more on or anything that you didn't have a chance to say that you'd like to say in closing? Don't feel pressured because we talked a lot. Um, I just want to give you that oppor- I just want to give you that opportunity.
No, thanks. I, 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 I think we've covered so much, very important topics. And, uh, I appreciate Jessica, you know, you, it's very easy when a teacher, to teacher talks because we can, we know what's going on, um, and it's just been very rewarding just to share some things with you. So, and Ken, so go ahead, uh, you want to finalize?
I do, I do, yeah. And I'm sorry to our listeners, but, um, when you get people who are passionate about education talking, we just go on and on. And it sounds like you've been such a great engaging guest that, you know, we need a part two, but everybody's really busy, so we'll see if that can happen. Um, and before I, I close, I just want to say on a personal level, you know, I really appreciate, like Ken said, you know, how engaging and open you've been and the conversation we had. And just in general, you know, there have been different places in the community that I've seen you show up that I haven't seen other school board members show up, you know, and I really appreciate that. So I just wanted to say a personal thank you. Um, but in general, let's talk about your race. So when is the first time people can vote for you? Are you going to have a primary? Are you going to go on to the general election? Let's talk about your race.
Okay, so real quick, uh, we have the primary in, well, effectively August. I think it's the second week of August, but the folks, folks can begin early voting the third week of July. So we don't have much time. Um, my donation site, uh, or I should say website is lindrayforschoolboard.com.
Simple, I like it.
Board.com. That's kind of easy. Um, the, the idea of money, um, I, I, I hate asking, uh, for, for money, for donations, but we do have an opponent, I think we have two. We have one that was, uh, Sally Harris, she was a school board member, but got voted out.
Of her district. She was South Tampa, right?
Yes, Stacy Hahn. Now she's running for the, for my seat. I don't know exactly why. Um, but, but still, that makes me have to, you know, work a little harder. And, uh, then this new person, no one really knows her, I don't even remember her last name, but she, um, she's running. So I'm hoping that I don't have to go to a runoff, I really don't. But it's going to be kind of dicey because the coronavirus would suggest that not a lot of people may vote for the primary. Um, but, but that's my hope. If I have to go to the general, that, you know, what, what happens is Jessica, real quick, is it takes my, it take, a school board member has to work on a campaign versus the issues. And that's very valuable time that I, I, I really don't have. Um, so I'm kind of telling everybody, please vote and let me get back to my work because, you know, I got to put up signs and, you know, the whole county is huge.
The county's gigantic. Now wait, is it the seventh or eighth? Because I thought it was the eighth. I heard you say seventh. Have we moved up?
What, uh, on the primary?
Oh, no, sorry, that was confusing. For our size, are we the seventh or eighth biggest county?
We, we used to be the eighth with the seven.
Ah, so we've moved up. Okay, so what I'm hearing is you are around, running countywide, which means anybody who's listening to this who lives in Hillsborough County can vote for you. You will be on their ballot, that the first election, the actual voting day is August 18th. Early voting starts before then. So the first time people will have the opportunity to vote for you is August 18th. Please make sure you sign up to vote by mail. You can go to the supervisor of election, super easy. You sign up, you click it, you'll get a ballot. If you don't want to use it and things look good and you can go to the polls, you can go to the poll and turn that in on election day, but it's better to have it just in case something comes up. So please sign up to vote by mail. You can track your ballot once you turn it in to make sure they've received it. It's completely safe. And then if for some reason, uh, two people in your race or, you know, the top two people, if nobody wins in the runoff in the primary and gets 50% plus one, there'll be another election in November. So if that happens, people will have a second chance to vote with you, vote for you, along with the presidential election in November. Is that third, I think, or second for the Super Tuesday?
Second, second, right, the Tuesday. Yeah, it's, I think it's the second. But, uh, yeah, Jessica, real quick, the, um, the early voting, I believe is the end of July, they, the people can start voting.
So ballots will go out then.
Yeah, yeah.
So you need to check Lynn Gray's name and then make sure, and you don't even have to pay for postage. Luckily, we have a good supervisor of election who's pays for it, for you. You just have to make sure your signature is clear on the front, matches your driver's license, send that back in. You can track it online. Um, and then, so what people can do to help you is they can go to your website, they can donate, even if it's five, 10, 15, $20, every penny helps get your message out to voters. And volunteers, are you looking for volunteers?
Oh, yes, volunteers to put signs. I can always use volunteers. And, uh, I have flyers too, so I don't know if anyone does anything with flyers these days, but they're really nice. I have a whole box of them.
Okay.
I, I'm looking at one right now. Um, but at any rate, yeah, I think, um, you know, if the teachers, even if we can get them, I don't know how many people listen, but even if they give me, uh, five, well, let's just say $10. We have a lot of teachers that make a big difference for donations and of course, their vote would be excellent.
Yes, the vote, the vote is the most important thing, but, but everything else really helps get your message out. Well, thank you again. I can't say how much I've enjoyed this. Uh, passion, you know, education's my passion, so I get extra excited talking about this.
Sure.
Thank you, Ken.
You did an excellent job. Jessica, you did a real good job. You got a lot out of me too.
Well, thank you. Ken helps a lot. He's my, he's my little, you know, second punch over there. Comes out and make sure he, he asks the good questions. Comes out and makes sure he asks the good questions.
I'm the bad cop, I guess.
Oh, no, you were just right on time.
And that's a lot to be the bad cop to me, Ken.
And I'm Mrs. Gray to you and I'm Lynn to Jessica Vaughn. Do this again, I am too neat.
All right, well, I'm laughing too much now. Thank you both for joining me. And please make sure you go out and you support Lynn Gray. Thank you again to all of our listeners. We appreciate you. You can always email us at jvaughn30@gmail.com. Please share and like our page and make sure you get this interview out. And thank you so much for listening.